We're gonna get started.
Yeah.
We're getting started right now. Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for November 18th, 2024. I am the Board Chair, Eric Eldridge. The following meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Tingsboro Media. The meeting is available through our local cable access channels on Xfinity and Verizon, HiOS, and is live streamed on our website, www.tingsbrowma.gov. A recording of this meeting will be available through the video-on-demand portion of our website. Open meeting laws require that any member of the audience who intends on recording either video or audio, so declare that now. Seeing none, after instruction from the State Fire Marshal and the Tingsboro Fire Chief, who happens to be in attendance, in the event of an emergency, there is an exit directly across from me at the rear of the room and one to my left. We're gonna go a little bit out of order. It's a very special evening. Lights are flickering. It's fantastic. Um, we're gonna go a little bit out of order, so I'm gonna start with board introductions with my left.
Good evening, Jacqueline Schnackert's Executive Assistant.
Good evening, Ron Schneider.
Good evening, Jackie Gilfus.
Good evening, Colin Loizel, Town Manager.
Good evening, Kat Foster, Assistant Town Manager.
So we're gonna start with the swearing-in ceremony for our new Chief of Police, but before that, what I'd like to have everybody, all those who can, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and then stay standing afterwards when we'll start the ceremony. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we'll start with the ceremony. Colin, I'll let you take it over. Please be seated.
Members of the Board, I'm thrilled to formally present to you this evening Tingsboro's new Chief of Police, Shawn Woods. Chief Woods has a lengthy career in public safety with nearly all of it here in Tingsboro. Chief Woods got his start as a public safety dispatcher and civilian detention attendant working for the City of Lowell in 1999. From 2000 to 2001, he served the town of Tingsboro as a public safety dispatcher before entering the police academy as a cadet for the Lowell Police Department. While actively in the academy for the City of Lowell, a full-time position opened up on the Tingsboro Police Department and Chief Woods formally switched to become a cadet for the town of Tingsboro. Chief Woods could have no doubt stayed as a cadet for the City of Lowell and had a fantastic career in a much larger department with much more room for growth. However, Chief Woods recognized the beauty and excellence of the town of Tingsboro and chose to make it his home not just professionally, but personally. He started as a full-time officer in 2001 and since then has held literally every rank. He served as Sergeant, Lieutenant, and most recently as Deputy Chief. He's done every job, every task, and every function within the Tingsboro Police Department, including shoveling, taking out the trash, and much more. Chief Woods is not just professionally tied to Tingsboro. He's made this town his home and a home for his family. He's a dedicated volunteer coaching far too many youth sports for me to remember and is active in the Rotary Club and at nearly every event and town function. Chief Woods is a humble man who hates attention, so the fact that he hasn't bolted out of this room yet is a miracle. When we learned of the retirement of former Chief Richard Howe, I knew two things. I knew that we had a strong internal candidate, one who had the respect of every member of the department, and one who could no doubt run the department without missing a beat. I also knew that he would excel even compared to outside candidates. When we posted the job, we received more than a dozen applications from the outside, which is a testament to the workforce that was created here in Tingsboro, no doubt thanks in part to Chief Woods. We interviewed four candidates and narrowed it down to two excellent picks. One, of course, was Chief Woods. Chief Woods stood out for a lot of reasons, but for me, there were three things about him that I knew we needed in our next chief. He was and is so incredibly committed to the town of Tingsboro, the department, and the people it serves. He's a lead-from-the-front kind of guy. You won't see Chief Woods hiding away in his office or taking much time off. You'll see him in roll call, on the street, and you'll see him doing the same type of work that he expects from his officers. He understands what it takes to run a modern police department and the importance that community service plays in doing so. This is evident not just in the way that he carries himself, but in the way that every police officer you see here tonight and anyone that serves the department carries themselves. Throughout this process, we solicited feedback from a variety of stakeholders, including members of this board and members of the Tingsboro Police Department. Without a question, these were the three things that everyone wanted to see in their next chief. A lot of people have asked me since we embarked on this journey why I felt we needed to do a search even if we had such a strong candidate. The answer is simple. As Chief Woods has told me a dozen times, process is important. Doing the work matters and being able to demonstrate in such a public way that our people are in fact the best people is critical to maintaining the public trust that officers like Chief Woods and all of the officers you see here tonight have worked so hard to develop. I'm incredibly proud to name Shawn Woods our next Chief of Police and I'm confident that under his leadership, the Tingsboro Police Department will continue to be the first-class law enforcement agency that this community deserves. I will now invite Town Clerk Jessica Brunel and Chief Woods to come up to administer the oath of office.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Shawn M. Woods.
I, Shawn M. Woods.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties incumbent on me.
Discharge the duties incumbent upon me.
As Chief of Police.
As Chief of Police.
For the town of Tingsboro.
For the town of Tingsboro.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. That wasn't on the chief's exam. Good evening. I'd like to begin by expressing my heartfelt gratitude to everyone here tonight. My family, friends, colleagues in public safety, and members of the community. Your support means more to me than my words can express. As the Town Manager contests to, although I'd much rather be sworn in quietly at Town Hall during business hours, tonight gives me an opportunity to publicly thank the people that have played an important role in my life and my career. And I can't pass up on that opportunity to do so. To Town Manager Loizel and the Select Board, thank you. For placing your trust in me to oversee the safety of our community, that trust is a responsibility I take with the utmost seriousness. Anyone who knows me knows how much this community means to me. As someone who lives here and who is raising my family here, no one has a greater vested interest in Tingsboro's safety and well-being than I do. I promise you I'm deeply committed to ensuring that our town remains a safe and welcoming place for all, and I promise to work tirelessly to protect it. To the Chiefs of Police who serve before me, Chief Burrows, Chief Mulligan, Chief Howe, thank you for your leadership and guidance. The examples I learned from each of you have been instrumental in shaping both the officer and the leader I am today. I'm especially grateful to Chief Howe, whom I've had the privilege of serving with for over the last seven years. To my colleagues, the men and women of the Tingsboro Police Department, sworn and civilian, thank you. Your dedication and commitment to our agency and to the residents of Tingsboro. Each of you plays an essential role in providing the best possible service to our community. And your professionalism and hard work absolutely do not go unnoticed by me. As the challenges of law enforcement continue to increase, I see you consistently rise to meet them with integrity and professionalism. Your dedication inspires me every day and strengthens my belief in the power of teamwork and community service. Together, I have no doubt that we will continue to keep Tingsboro a safe and thriving community. To the members of the Fire Department here tonight, thank you for your service to our community. Although we're in two different buildings, I view us as one public safety team. I know together, we face the challenge of providing service to the growing demands of an expanding community. I look forward to working closely with Chief Russell and to the dedicated members of the Fire Department to meet those challenges head-on. Our shared goal has always been to provide the highest level of safety and service to our residents, and I'm confident that as a team, we will continue to achieve that. To the community, thank you. Thank you for the support that you've shown me as an officer and to me and my family as community members since I began my career here 24 years ago. Now, as your Chief of Police, I'm committed to upholding our department's mission of building trust, fostering partnerships, and addressing the quality of life issues that matter most to you. I pledge to listen to your concerns and to lead with professionalism, fairness, and integrity to ensure that the Tingsboro Police Department remains a source of pride for our town. Finally, to my family, my mother Beverly, my father Michael, my extended family who's in the room today, and my children, Caden, Kelty, Kellyanne, Connor, and Callie. All of my accomplishments are because of your love and support. And to my wife Elizabeth, being married to someone in public safety is no easy task. The long hours, unpredictable schedule, the unique challenges of this profession are difficult to manage, but you've done so with grace and strength and love. Raising five kids while establishing your own career while being a police officer's wife is no small feat. I'm forever grateful to the sacrifices you've made and for your unwavering support. To conclude, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude for the trust that you've placed in me, and I pledge to lead by example and to work harder than ever before to continue to earn the trust each and every day that I serve as your Chief of Police. Thank you.
Okay. So I'll open it up to the board for comments. Select person Gilfus, would you like to start?
Sure. Um, just endless congratulations, profound thanks. I've only been in this role for a short period of time, but you've already been a delight to work with, and so we're on this journey together and incredibly proud of you. Thank you.
Select person Schneider.
Chief, congratulations. Look forward to many years of working together. Thank you.
I know that you really like being up there, and so I only have another 10 or 12 pages to go through. No, I'll be brief. Colin, I am thrilled that you made this decision. Chief, you are absolutely the right person for, uh, to be our chief and to lead us in the future. I think that the Police Department is in a great position, but the needs of the town and policing are rapidly evolving, and you are absolutely the right person to lead us in that. So I appreciate you taking on this great responsibility, and I look forward to not only watching these things happen, but to help support you in any way that we can to make sure that you are successful in accomplishing your mission. So, thank you. With that, the ceremony is complete. What I'd like to do, because there's a lot of folks here, I'd like to take a brief recess, but first, if we could have the Honor Guard first lead out and then we'll have everybody else go through, so just from a safety standpoint. So with that, the ceremony is over. There will be ample opportunity for folks to take pictures outside, and the family, welcome to stay. We will have a meeting on board, so just, meeting going on, so just keep it down to a dull roar. With that, thank you all for coming.
Honor Guard, attention. Right face. Forward march. Left, left, left.
You can all leave. Or you can stay, by the way. You don't have to leave. I just didn't want you to have to sit through our meeting. But we'll let everybody, we'll give you ample opportunity to make your way.
It's a great meeting.
Scheduled programming, we're ready to restart the select board meeting for November 18th. Why don't we start with meeting minutes? Can I get a motion on the meeting minutes for November 4th?
I move that we accept the meeting minutes from November 4th as posted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries 300. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to citizens and business time. Are there any citizens who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we're gonna move down to number five, which is a public hearing for Tinsborough Sports Center Inc., alcohol application. Jackie, I'll let you read the information, then we'll get ready to open the public hearing.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Before the board tonight is a new application from the Tinsborough Sports Center Inc. at 501 Potash Hill, Tinsborough, for a new on-premise Section 12 all-alcohol beverages restaurant license. On October 7th, the board approved an application for Tinsborough Sports Realty Trust. This was submitted to the ABCC and returned with no action. Attorney Nikosia, Mr. Wickens have worked with the ABCC to work out the appropriate applicant, and they are here this evening to discuss the changes to the application. The application is complete and the appropriate fees have been paid. Butters were re-notified by the applicant via certified mail on October 31st, and the hearing was advertised in the Lowell Sun on November 4th and the 11th. The changes to the application include those listed on your memo this evening, which is available for public view, I won't read those all out. As the changes are primarily due to changing to a corporation, the applicant, the applicant is relatively the same name. We were not asked to resubmit to the boards for additional comments because they had already commented. There were no adverse comments on the previous application.
Thank you. Why don't we open the public hearing, and then we'll dig in?
I move that we open the public hearing for Tinsborough Sports Center Inc.'s alcohol application.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries 300. Public hearing is open.
Do you wanna wave the?
Wave the, did you wanna wait, can we also wave the, the reading of the butters list?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries 300 as well. Mr. Nikosia, did you wanna explain?
Very briefly, just for the record, Pete Nikosia, on behalf of the applicant, Darrell Wickens, the principal of the applicant. The applicant has changed from your prior approval. It was originally the Tinsborough Sports Realty Trust, and is now back to the Tinsborough Sports Center Inc. Long story short, ABCC's legal counsel took a look at the trust declaration, felt that we needed to make some amendments to it to expand its purpose beyond real estate holding. That poses a little bit of a problem for us because we have bank financing for the construction on the property, and to amend the trust declaration is gonna affect the financing status. So Ralph Sacramone, who's the head of the ABCC, and I talked through it, and he requested that it just be put in the name of the corporation. And that he's got it on his desk, and as soon as we go through this administrative process again, that it will be approved immediately in the name of the new applicant. So really, it was just a matter of form over substance. Nothing is changing on the project. Everything that we presented the last time, I would incorporate here and by reference, and just note that it's a different applicant, same principles, same concepts, same everything else. So we'd ask that you approve it, and we send it back to the ABCC for blessing.
And is this the same, I mean, is this the same application as some of the others that are already in place? Just a different location?
Yes, so this will hold two licenses, just at a different physical location, and the ABCC is fine with that, as they noted that they have lots of parent holding companies for some of these chain restaurants that have, you know, 50 licenses in the area, and, you know, that's not an issue, so.
Right, but it's, it's not some wholly new entity that we're unfamiliar with?
Same exact one.
It's another paperwork type of thing?
Yeah, incorporated in 2005.
Okay. I will open it up to the public if there's any questions relative to the application, the paperwork? If you can step up to the mic, I believe.
Shirley Birchfield, 17 Dickens Lane. I'm still not quite understanding why we've got Tinsborough Sports Center in one location, and Tinsborough Sports Center in another location, trying to hold two separate licenses? And they're saying they're separate locations, what is separating them?
One of them is.
I mean, isn't, is there just a wall? Is there an alley? Is there a different address number? Why are they different?
Thank you.
The other license holder is Tinsborough Sports Concessions Inc.
Yep.
It's a separate company, and there can be more than one license in the same general vicinity. It's not dissimilar to a plaza that's got two restaurants, and, you know, it's just different physical spaces, so.
Could you describe where the, the spaces are? Because concessions is in one area.
In the front of the existing building.
Yep.
And then we also have the Tinsborough Sports Concessions with the outside food truck.
Yep.
And then Tinsborough Sports Center Inc.'s license is gonna be in the new restaurant, in the newly constructed portion in the back.
So it's in three different, there's actually three different locations?
Physical locations.
Three physical locations.
So what happens is, with all of these applications, you have to specifically define the license premises, and all of the definitions of the license premises are different. This also being different.
Okay, then I'm misremembering one thing. I thought when they applied for the license for the food truck, it was just an extension of the other, they were just trying to extend it, it wasn't a separate license. It is, it is a separate license?
Yes.
It's a seasonal license.
Okay, seasonal license, okay. Because the, the Tinsborough Sports concession is also DBA Tinsborough Sports Center Inc., so that's where it was confusing, because that first license is.
It is, it is not, I'm sorry to interrupt. Sports Concessions is owned by my son Brian Wickens. I have no affiliation with it at all. He leases space from us for the concessions business.
Okay, so when I inquired about that, I was told that that first license was under Tinsborough Sports Concessions, DBA Tinsborough Sports Center Inc., so that made me see like it was the same thing.
It's not.
Do we have the, the light, the list?
I am not logged in, but I don't have the liquor license.
Tinsborough Sports Center had a license at 18 Progress Ave, that has lapsed because it was with the property, because we got a special license that was tagged with the property, so it did not move with us.
And again, all of these issues have been discussed in great detail and vetted with the ABCC chair as well as their legal counsel, so this is their request for us to come back with this change.
Right, yeah, go ahead, Colin.
Just from our procedural standpoint, licensing, and Attorney Nikosia can explain this in far more complicated terms than I can, but it's a two-part process whereby the first step is the local licensing authority, you all, determining that the site in question is appropriate, the person is of good character. A lot of these questions about the trust, the declaration of trust, and the financials, those are vetted out in the state review process, and so if there were any issues, as in this case, the ABCC pointed out, one issue they wanted corrected, that's in the second part of the process. The local authorities discretion is really about whether or not the site in question is appropriate. This board has voted affirmatively in the past about that, and whether or not the person is of good standing, again, the board has voted in the affirmative in the past for that.
Thank you.
Okay, if I could continue. I've never actually seen a physical copy of a license, so I don't know what information is on it. Does it contain, of course, it would contain Tinsborough Sports Center Inc. on it. Does it contain the, the name of the proprietor, or the manager, or any specific personal names on there?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Whose name will be on this one?
This application?
Darrell Wickens is general, is licensed manager.
Okay, thank you. So if there was a violation at, at the bar, or whatever the restaurant, then Mr. Wickens would be the one responsible for that?
Well, I, I take issue with the word responsible. I mean, he would be the one to respond to whatever the claim of a violation is.
All right, I got that. And if there was a change of management, you'd have, they'd have to notify you as well as the state board?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
And there would be people involved who would need to be doing like the serve safe training and all that kind of information? Okay, thank you.
So I, I wanna make one thing clear, though. The term miss, the term manager is, is a bit of a misnomer. The manager listed on a license, a liquor license, is for all legal purposes the individual tied to the license to respond to complaints and to monitor, you know, safe service and things. That does not prevent a license holder from having operational managers on the site, running the restaurant, running different divisions of the restaurant, being involved in alcohol service. There are different tiers of management staff as it relates to these restaurants. So it doesn't require the listed licensed general manager to be the chief cook and bottle washer, you know, up and down the line. So just because there may be other human beings involved in the process, that doesn't require us to come back here and get approval from the board or from the ABCC. It's only if we change the licensed general manager for the liquor license would it have to go through that review process.
And that's consistent with what we do with all the other locations?
Correct.
The Smokey Bones and all the.
Correct.
That person is not there all the time, they're just the one that's listed on there, and then there are other managers who are there, and they have to adhere to the, the rules and regulations of the ABCC relative to that license.
Correct.
So that does bring up one more question, though, then. So all those employees, bartenders, onsite managers, staff managers, whatever they are, would all be listed as employed by Tinsborough Sports Realty Trust, I mean, Tinsborough Sports Center?
Not, not necessarily. I mean, they, they, they can be, however the administrative structure is set up. So, I mean, they can be employees of, of.
A third party even.
Yeah, of different vendors, or, you know, depends what the structure is.
So a third party could lease out that space and use their liquor license?
No.
Okay.
Now, you could hire a third party, but you're still ultimately responsible for it.
So it's, it's like a contractor? Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions from the public? Seeing none, questions from the board? Select person Gilfus, any questions?
I don't think so. I mean, I've gone through the application, and it literally looks like it was whited out Realty Trust and replaced with Center Inc. It's handwritten, so, I mean, I think we, we went through this not long ago, so I think I'm satisfied.
Select person Schneider?
Uh, no questions, Mr. Chair.
And, yeah, I think we've, we've gone through this fairly straightforward paperwork. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Do I move to close the public hearing?
Yes, first, we gotta close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any further questions from a deliberation standpoint relative to this? I will entertain a motion, then.
I move that the select board approve the all-alcoholic beverages license as presented for Tinsborough Sports Center Inc. at 501 Potash Hill Road, Tinsborough.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries 300. We got, we got some flickering lights going on.
We need to stop inviting people, huh?
Is that enough?
They're just leaning against the lights.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, next item, public hearing, Thai Elephant Common Vic weekday and Sunday entertainment application. Jackie, I will have you start us off.
Before you this evening is an application from Thai Elephant for a weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses and a common vicular license at 130 Middle Sex Road, Unit 5. You may recall, this is the former location of Candy's Cakes. The restaurant hours will be Monday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and the entertainment will consist of television and radio or stereo. The application is complete and the appropriate fees have been paid. Notifications were mailed to a butters by the applicant's counsel on November 5th, 2024, and a legal ad was published in the Lowell Sun on November 4th and November 11th. We requested feedback from any department having jurisdiction over this type of request, and there were no adverse comments. The applicant has been notified that this license cannot be issued until all required building, health, and fire permits have been issued. The building inspector also commented that any changes to the space will require architectural design plans. Additionally, the applicant is aware they will need to provide this office with a copy of their certificate of liability and workers' comp, which they did so today, and that is it.
Excellent.
We do have the applicant here, if she would like to come on up to the board, up to the table?
Just in case there are any questions, so with that, can we open the public hearing?
I move that we open the public hearing for Thai Elephant Common Vic weekday and Sunday entertainment application.
And, and?
And I waive the reading of the butters notice as, what?
List.
Legal notice.
And legal notice.
Second.
There we go. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries 300. Public hearing is open. Are there any questions from the public relative to this application? Okay, I will open it up to the board for questions. You might wanna come up to the table. Did you wanna come up? No, you don't want you, okay.
Okay, um, I do have questions, so. I, I have questions, that's what I mean. So I live right across the street, I'm really excited to have another Thai restaurant in town. I'd love to just hear more about you and the business, and about how it's maybe different than what we've seen in the past.
So if you wanna come up to the microphone, either, you can sit at the table if you like.
Okay.
All right.
That's fine, no problem.
No further questions.
No questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So do we have enough information to go by? Or would you like to see perhaps, is this something, Colin, that we could reschedule when there's a translator to ask some questions?
Totally up to the board, certainly you could continue it if there are questions that the board feels that needs answered before approving.
I mean.
I would say it would be more necessary if there were members of the public that had questions that weren't answered, and there weren't. But certainly, if the board needs more information before they feel comfortable, all you would need to do is vote to continue this to a date certain.
I feel like it would take a lot for us to vote against a request like this, so.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in the application, I didn't see any comments from other departments that had concerns about what was happening here. It's an established location, it's not like this is a brand-new building that's being there. This is a, a new business that's coming in. So I am fine with proceeding.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add, we do have everything here. The applicant has been working with the building department and with the Board of Health on all the issues, any changes that they're gonna be doing. They are aware that they need a certificate of occupancy before they can actually open, and we have had some discussion today regarding potentially applying for a beer and wine application at a time in the future.
Got it, okay.
Do you know if they've owned restaurants in the past?
Didn't see that in the application.
If you've owned a restaurant in the past?
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, okay.
Okay, so, um, if there's anyone else from the public who would like to speak or ask any questions, if not, can we close the public hearing?
I move that we close the public hearing for Thai Elephant Common Vic weekday and Sunday entertainment application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries 300. Any further deliberation? Do you feel comfortable making a motion? Then I will enter, I will entertain a motion.
How long is this license for before it, like? All right, we'll give them a year, and then if we have.
It expires in a year.
Yes.
We'll have a conversation then. We'll just be better prepared next time. I move that the select board approve the application for a new weekday and Sunday entertainment license and a common vic, oh goodness.
Victriller.
Victriller license for Thai Elephant at 130 Middle Sex Road, Unit 5, as presented contingent upon the completion of all requirements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries 300. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay. National Grid poll petition for Kendall Road. This is not a public hearing, right? Correct, correct. So Jackie, if you wanna.
Hey, National Grid is before the select board this evening with a poll petition request. They are requesting permission to install two JO polls and relocate 12 JO polls on Kendall Road, beginning near the intersection of Bryant Lane, as noted in the petition. Their request to erect and maintain polls, wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary, said polls to be erected substantially in accordance with the attached plan on Kendall Road, Tinsborough, Massachusetts. A representative from National Grid is here to present the request and answer any questions that you may have. Butters were notified of this hearing in advance of the meeting and were invited to attend to express concerns and ask questions. The board should be aware that this request is tied to the work being done on Kendall Road under the $2 million Mass Works grant that the town was awarded. As the town has a role to play in this project, the proposal before the board has already been reviewed and approved by the town's engineering department, and these changes are required to make the project work.
Thank you for that explanation. We have Vaz from National Grid?
Yes, Vaz Nahang, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Andover, Mass. Represent National Grid. Yeah, I'm here to, to seek the approval from the town for the petition of the relocation of 12 poles and the install of two additional poles for the, I believe it's the road widening, widening of Kendall Road in Tinsborough.
Even though this isn't technically a public hearing, we do send a butters notices to folks living there, so if there are any that have comments, now would be the time.
Okay. Are there any residents, any of the butters, who would like to ask some questions? If you can come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, and ask your question.
Name is Dennis Gary, 85 Kendall Road. My property is on the corner lot at the end of the street, and I have three poles that are on my property line. My question is the corner property pole, you talk about it said 25 feet movement. On the drawing, it's a little unclear where that's going to go. If the power poles are moving 25 feet from the street inwards to the north, what is that gonna do for the power lines getting closer to my home, to my residence?
I believe all, all that's been pretty much worked out, and in order, the, the power lines will have to stay, they, they try to make the power lines as straight as possible, so there's no leaning of poles and such like that, but.
So you're saying the power lines are gonna do a, a right turn, left turn, to stay close to the road? Could you say the poles are coming back 25 feet from where they are now, correct?
That's, that's because I believe that's because of the, the, the widening of the road, so the poles have to be set further back in order for the widening, for the road to be widened.
Correct, but what is that gonna do for the one, because they're gonna do the sidewalk at the same time? The power pole that's on the corner of my lot, I'm concerned about how close the power lines will come once that power pole's moved, because I also have a well.
We, per our standards, we, we, we try to stay away at least 50, I believe it's 50 feet away from a well, so they, they do some environmental investigationing on things like that to make sure that the pole is nowhere close to the, the well.
My biggest concern, though, is I have a Fieldstone.
Yep.
Foundation?
Yep.
Are they gonna pile drive the poles, or are they gonna auger them down?
Um, they, they usually dig, auger down what they need to do, and then set the pole in place, so.
Okay. Like I said, my biggest concern is how far the power lines are gonna come from the street towards the house.
Right.
Because they also go up the north side of my property.
Unfortunately, I don't, I've, I've never been to that area, so I can't really say.
Colin, if, can you intervene?
Mr. Chair, if, if we can get the gentleman's contact information, I can have the project engineer, Vanessa and Associates, call him directly.
That'd be, that'd be wonderful.
And it may be easier than, and we can figure out, and before National Grid, I think we're probably several weeks out before National Grid is on the schedule to start moving these, so we can have Vanessa call you tomorrow, and even meet you on site. They're doing bi-week, bi-week, no, twice-a-week visits to the site, so we can have somebody from Vanessa meet you at your property to walk through exactly what's gonna happen, and to take any feedback that you have.
I couldn't really tell much from the, the drawing that was given to me on the email.
That, that diagram?
Little, little furry, and there were questions I just, I couldn't get answers from.
Absolutely. If, if you give Jackie your phone number, I can have Vanessa call you tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much.
Should that work?
That'll work fine.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the public? Okay. Questions from the board? Select person Gilfus?
I guess my question is, when you're moving the power lines, is it, is it one single pole, or are they supported with another pole? I, I only ask because the one that's at the corner between Middle Sex Road where the meeting house is, I've noticed this week that there's like a second pole that's supporting it, and it takes up a lot of space.
If it's pulled side by side like this, you mean?
Like there, it looks like there's a support that's at an angle.
Oh, that's, that's, um, that's a, that's, I forgot the technical term for that, I'm sorry. If, if it's leaning like this, yes, that's, that pole, that pole is required there in order to push the pole out, to keep it straight, if not, the pole will get bent, pulled towards the opposite.
We don't want that. So the ones that we're talking about moving, are any of them going to be those type of poles, or are they just single?
I don't think so. On, on the drawings here, it doesn't depict that, so I don't think that's gonna be happening.
Yeah, I think if we could just clarify that, I, I just wanna be aware of how much space we're taking up, especially if this is now encroaching on people's property or the space that we're using.
If there was a pole like that to be in question, it, it should have been on the petition, which I see it's not on here, so I don't believe it's gonna be on it.
Okay, that's it.
Select person Schneider?
No, I, I have no particular questions, as long as we deal with the residents' concerns, and it sounds like we will right away, then, then I'm fine with it.
Yeah, and this, this isn't something that, Jake, we have a third party that works on these?
Yep.
Okay. So would we have the motion contingent upon those issues being addressed to our?
I think the, the language that you need for a poll petition is very specific.
Okay.
I, I can say, because we're spending town money on it, we'll make sure that the issues are addressed before, a state grant given to the towns, we'll make sure that's addressed before we spend money on it.
Okay, is there, so the language that we have in the motion is specific and required for the movement, but we're gonna make sure that we get that addressed?
Tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right, then I'm fine with that.
Will you give us an update right away?
Okay, with that, I guess I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board grant the poll petition as presented by National Grid for work on Kendall Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, that carries 300. We'll get that answer to you. Make sure that gets squared away. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Make sure I don't skip over anything today. One-day liquor license for Festival of Trees, Tinsborough Recreation.
Included in your packet this evening are three one-day liquor license applications for beer and wine submitted by the recreation director, Allison Page, for the annual Festival of Trees. The recreation committee is requesting one license for Old Town Hall, 10 Kendall Road, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Friday, December 6th. They expect approximately 30 attendees at this event. The other two requests are for the First Parish Meeting House, 214-216 Middle Sex Road, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, November 30th, and Sunday, December 1st. They are expecting approximately 150 attendees at these events. We requested comments from departments with jurisdiction, and there are no adverse comments. No food will be served at these events.
Thank you for the explanation. I don't think we've seen this applicant before, so. Anything? Anything different this year relative to Festival of Trees and the application, or anything else that you might want to elaborate on while you're here?
Regarding the liquor license, no. It's the same request that we come in with every year, partially for the laser show that goes on as one of the nights, and then we have two workshops that are the other two requests. Standard that we have every, every season. But yes, we're moving along nicely over at all three buildings. We have about eighty vendors set up at Littlefield Library, which is just so nice to have that open again. Old Town Hall is already full of trees. In the meeting house, we're working on currently. Outdoors, we have a few new things. We've moved our little village. We have some very nice reindeer stables at the top of the Switchback off of Winslow Road, which you absolutely have to go and see. It's adorable.
Excellent. Questions from the Board. Select person Gilfus.
The only question that I had was, what the heck was that thing that was being built? And I texted Colin and I said, what is this? And Colin said, I trust that it will come into, you know, Allison will handle it. So yeah, reindeer stables. No, no further questions.
What else?
Select person Schneider.
No questions. I just look forward to the Festival of Trees every year. I think it's a great event within the town, so thank you.
One question. How are you with volunteers?
We're actually pretty good. We are doing very well with volunteers. I think people are kind of catching on that this is the fun way to volunteer, and you get to see everybody that you haven't seen in town. So it's a great volunteer. We do have still open slots. I'm not saying we don't need people, because we do, but we're doing very well, so I'm happy that the town is investing time in what we do, so it's good.
Fantastic. I look forward to it. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Select Board approve three one-day liquor licenses for the Festival of Trees slash Recreation Committee at Old Town Hall, ten Kendall Road, on Friday, December sixth, twenty twenty-four, from five PM to nine PM, and at First Parish Meeting House, two fourteen to two sixteen Middlesex Road, on Saturday, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and Sunday, December first, twenty twenty-four, from four to eight PM as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstain? That carries three zero zero. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you soon.
Yes.
We've got some other folks that are here. Did you want to, you want to go out of order?
Yeah, to old business?
Yes.
Sure.
So I'm going to recommend that we go, we're going to, we're going to skip over new business. We'll come back to it, I promise. The local license approvals and the town manager's report. Let's do eleven A, which I assume is what some folks are interested in. And let's talk about public safety building land options. I believe that Colin has a little bit of an update and can perhaps, perhaps fill in a little bit.
Yes, I'll save you all from going through the original slides. I see we have a lot of our fire department here, members of the SER team, all of them will be very familiar with the needs of the fire department, and we talked at length last time for the needs of both departments. As a, as a high-level reminder, this conversation is really a much overdue response to the Public Safety Building Study Committee's final report and recommendation, which was that, in light of the fact that residents were being asked to pay for the new middle school, it wasn't appropriate to assume that now was the, or that then was the time to construct a new public safety building, but that the town should start by identifying a parcel that could accommodate either a combined public safety building or a standalone building. The last meeting, we talked about what the different considerations were, and my professional opinion that the town cannot, in the near future, afford the combined cost of a combined public safety building. I think we were looking at almost thirty million dollars back in twenty nineteen when we had the Tecton report. Certainly, I think we'd be looking at something closer to thirty-five, thirty-six million. That said, we highlighted all the significant challenges. We know the police department is undersized, but one of the things that we talked about, and that I talk to Chief Russell about quite frequently, is that the fire station is not only undersized, it doesn't work for a fire department. There's the lack of separation between hot zones and cold zones, and none of this is new to you, the La Valley Brunzinger report that we had presented to you in September highlighted all of that. And so with that as the backdrop, wanted to figure out what the best path forward is, understanding that any construction obviously would need to be largely funded by debt exclusion, borrowing any miracle from the state, creating a public building authority in the same way that they have the MSBA. We know Senator Kennedy has filed that bill, I think, three times now. It has unfortunately met ill fate on Beacon Hill. So what the reality is, is that we would likely be looking at most, if not all, the costs of a standalone building or a combined building being funded by debt exclusion, which is an additional impact on taxpayers. But before you even get to that point, there are other decisions that need to be made. First and foremost, are you going for a combined public safety building or are you going for standalone buildings? It was my recommendation at the last meeting, and it remains my recommendation that the town explore standalone buildings for a variety of reasons. One, it'll allow the town to prioritize, and it certainly isn't, this is greater need than that greater need. I think we have to make tough choices. But it'll also allow me, working with the Board and with Chief Russell and Chief Woods, to identify a parcel or parcels that will work for standalone buildings. As a part of that exploration is determining whether or not an appropriation is needed to acquire parcels. What we know is the fire department has to be located within a certain radius of the town center. We have a lot more flexibility with the police department. It could be on a town-owned park lot, really anywhere in town, because their core function, they're out in the community, whereas the fire department needs a centralized location to respond. At the last meeting, there was an interest in confirming with our chiefs that the combined public safety building, which was what we talked about in twenty nineteen and even as a part of the Public Safety Building Committee, the real benefit is on the cost side. If you have the money to build it, it is more cost-effective to build them at the same time. Operationally, our departments have operated very well separately, and I've confirmed with both Chief Russell and Chief Woods that from an operational standpoint, the buildings don't need to be combined. In fact, I think Mr. Cohen mentioned this, at our last meeting, having some level of redundancy may actually, in a worst-case scenario, be beneficial. So all of that in mind, what I'm looking to do is get direction from the Board this evening to move forward with really one major item, which is to identify a parcel of land for each building that works, and if it has to be acquired, to let the Board know what those costs are. So that's the first piece. I would recommend that the Board direct me to work with two members of the Board and each public safety chief, to identify the best option for a parcel of land, as well as any potential costs. I would say that in sixty to ninety days, expect to report back to the Board. Once we've done that, and now we're talking perhaps three months from now, we would then need to have the conversation about which building are we prioritizing? Unless some financial miracle happens between now and then, I do believe that the Board will need to make a decision. And I think that's when we need to look at what the potential costs are. I'm not saying of a full-out design this May, but looking at getting funding from our free cash to do at least a preliminary design, so we know what we're working with, what the challenges of the site may be, so that we start moving this forward. I think we all know, and this Board has acknowledged, that these are real needs. We are also faced, of course, with the financial reality that people are struggling, and we have to be cognizant of that. I think this is a measured approach that keeps the ball rolling, and I think it'll help this Board and taxpayers see what the options are, so that everybody's making a full, a fully informed decision. I think the third piece, once we've really narrowed down what the priority is, is tasking myself, our Finance Director, and perhaps a member of this Board and the Finance Committee, to put together the different funding scenarios. It's easy enough for me to sit here and say that the easiest way to fund the construction of one or both buildings is just a debt exclusion, but in a similar fashion that we got creative with the middle school debt. There are creative ways that we can help reduce that impact, and I would see that as kind of the third tier is presenting to you, to the Finance Committee, to residents, how could we make this happen, and what is the realistic timeframe? So I have a recommended vote in here. I think it's important to have two members of the Select Board on it. I've met multiple times now on this with both chiefs, explained the approach, shared this presentation with them. I think this is the appropriate start, and in the motion, you'll see that I require that I report back to the Board by February tenth, what parcel of land is the best.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that explanation. And to be clear, we are, we are moving forward, but we're not, this is not something that we're going to have for Springtown Meeting, a full plan and ask for a full debt exclusion for a public safety building or buildings. We're not there. However, what we've said, to be very clear, that doing nothing is not an option, and that we really need to, we need to make this a priority of things that we, that we figure out. And it's not, it's not a quick fix. We wish it was, but it's not, so we're going to have to come up with, with those types of things. So what we're talking about here is keeping that momentum and making sure that with the investment that we made in the assessment, right, and understanding what was going on, to, we don't, we said we don't want to be sitting here four or five years from now and being in the exact same position, and we might need to break some of these things up. So that was what we asked you to do. Also, you, you did speak with the chiefs specifically, and they are on board that there's no reason, there's no compelling reason other than money that we would have a combined building, and that given the cost and our budget situation, that's, that's not a feasible thing at this point in time.
We are all in agreement that operationally, the buildings do not need to be combined for them to deliver the same level of service that residents are used to.
Perfect. I will open it up for other questions from the Board. Select person Gilfus, I'll let you start.
The folks that are here, can we hear from them?
We can.
Does anyone have, I mean, the fact that you're here, I think, is compelling, so does anyone have anything, any perspective that you'd want to share? Thanks. You know this better than I do, so I want to hear from you.
Sure. Aside from...
Can you give us name?
Chris Newton, twelve Santa Cruz Drive. I'm also a captain on the Fire Department.
Thank you.
Aside from a lot of the town officials come in for a signature on an application to be a select person or a school committee, you guys don't spend a lot of time in the Fire Department. It's in and out, sign the name, and I'm off to the next thing. The Fire Department is in deplorable conditions. I mean, I'm sure in conversations with Chief Russell, and Chief Sands, no different than the police department is, but, I mean, our bunk rooms are literally outside where we park the fire apparatus. I mean, look at a cancer research study, diesel fumes. I mean, we have a door that protects us. This is what we live with, twenty-four hours a day. Every day, we come to work. Look, we all signed up for this, and we get it, but the Fire Department has taken a backseat in this town to a lot of departments for a long time. I don't know how the town can keep going in this direction. You have any other questions?
I definitely want to come hang out, so if we could do that.
Please feel free. Come down. We'll show you what we live like. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Michael Roach, Sixth National Lane. I'm also the chairperson of the Board of Health, member of the SER team as well, working with the Fire Department. We got to tour the actual, the Fire Department, and I mean, he's exactly right, having just a door to protect all the diesel fumes and stuff like that. I mean, we've probably condemned other houses, being a part of the Board of Health, and looking at this, and I was actually appalled by it. In addition, if you are calling, looking at parcels of land, if there's any way that you can potentially add, we're spending thirty to thirty-five million. I don't know what it costs for a new apparatus, but some of their engines are probably like twenty-plus years old. So those are going to come around to be replaced. In addition, when they did teach us how to change out the oxygen tanks, they're operating on two different systems of oxygen tanks, and being the district, I believe it's six, apparatus that has the ability to compress the air back into the tanks. Having two separate containers is, I don't know how they can possibly do that, and so if you're looking for more money, if you're going to spend this much, I would try to see if you can get them some new equipment on top of it as well. And I think that would definitely bring them up to par, but thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and a couple of things. One of the things that we have made clear is that the time that's going to take us to get to a new building is not enough. You know, we can't just sit there and do nothing until that's in place. We do have a new pumper truck that was approved at Town Meeting. Thank you, residents. There are additional things we know that are in there. The ladder truck is definitely on that list. It's on our list for capital asset and our planning, which I think we have a meeting on Wednesday. We have to figure out all of those things, the SCBA, the PACs that we've partially funded. There's a lot of things that need to be done, and I think it's important for people to understand that giving them a new building doesn't replace those needs as well, and we still need to address those short-term. What we're saying here is in addition to doing those things, this is not a this or that, this is a, we need to do the building planning, which is going to take some time, and we need to address the shorter-term needs to make sure that our folks are properly equipped to not only do their job, but to be safe. You know, right now, we've acknowledged that this is a problem, and we've committed that we're not going to do nothing, that we need to do something. And we know that it's a large undertaking, but as Colin talked about, there are difficult decisions that we've got to make, but that's our job. And so we do need to go through and do some of those things. And I see someone who's really technically knowledgeable about this, who's waiting, so Chief Russell.
Wes Russell, one eighty-seven.
I'm sorry.
One eighty-seven Kendall Road, Fire Chief. Yeah, and I want to say, I am grateful to have the manager's office and the Select Board that really is working with the Fire Department on things like our SCBA and the apparatus, and we just, you know, are making deals now for our new apparatus. And we've been moving in the right direction, I think, on the fire station, but I'm here to tell you that we need to move quicker. You know, when I hear, when I listen to the last meeting and I hear discussion about things, you know, happening in the next eight to ten years, you know, I just, it's just not acceptable, I think. You're talking about getting a report back, you know, suggesting sixty to ninety days. I'm pretty confident I could have that report back here in six to nine days as to what we need to do. Clearly, the police department has their needs, and I don't want to speak to what those are. I've heard them. I've attended all of the Public Safety Building Committee meetings and understand them. And I think that it's become very clear that our needs are urgent, and involves health and safety of the firefighters, not just space and design. And I just urge the Board to try to move as quickly as possible on this. We realize that in doing this, we're not going to get a state-of-the-art public safety building. We need, and I heard the discussions about, you know, pre-inductured steel, instead of aluminum, hopefully, at the last Board meeting. I personally am on board with that. The fastest way that we can find a suitable site, get a structure built that has the necessary apparatus storage, office and living space in a safe and healthy manner, that, you know, we're going to avoid problems down the road. So I just really want to urge you to move as quickly as possible with this. Tell me what you need me to do. I'm sure these guys are willing to help out as well. But we need to, we need to move fast, and I, I would, I would, I still really hope to be a lot further along in the spring than, than I think what I'm hearing from you guys, to tell you the truth. We can find land that's out there that we own. We can find a way to do it, and I'm just urging you to move as quickly as possible. My, my feeling is that I, I would like to see the Board commit that a fire station is a higher priority right now than a police station, while they're both needs, and that you're going to move forward to building a new fire station as both needs, and that you're gonna move forward to building a new fire station as quickly as possible. That would be my request. Thanks.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good.
Brad Biscanat, 24 Petoka Boulevard. I'm the captain of the fire department. Also on duty right now. So, if we get the alarm, then we're out the door. So, excuse me, we're ahead of time. So, I just wanna touch base a little bit more on what Captain Newton was talking about. I had been on since a little prior to 1999. We had a, a call, semi, full-time, part-time, department-type thing. We had a living space with a, a TV and a table. It worked out great. People came for callback. We sat at the table. We talked about the call. We signed the sheet and get out of there. Now, we're living there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Sometimes we have five guys on. Sometimes we have six guys on, depending with the chiefs working also. At nighttime, it's four guys. If we have a storm sometimes, it's more guys. We have four bunks currently. And the fire department has, has gone through these, these multiple stages in the 20-plus years that I've been there. And it's almost, it reminds me of a, like a tree fort when I was a kid. My dad wouldn't let me use his tools because he was worried I was gonna leave them out in the yard and rust them. So, we got rocks, some wood that we may or may not have borrowed from the construction site nearby, and put a floor and a roof and everything. And then the next day, we had a great idea that we're gonna add a ladder. The next day, we had a great idea to do it. It's all makeshift. It's all over the place. And currently, right now, we have this first room, which I talked about before. We have this bunk room, which doubles as an office kind of lounge area, which we don't really spend a lot of time on because we're so busy to begin with. We have these four bunks room, and we have it downstairs. Then we have this ambulance bay that we, we kinda put on, that essentially has a dirt driveway going to it. It's just this makeshift stuff. We just keep adding stuff. A lot of the stuff, fortunately or unfortunately, we have skilled guys in our department that help put these things together. You know, we have the roofers and we have the builders, and we pull this energy into it. And I'm kinda with Chief on this. We can point out the really bad things. I can go down a list of all the really not-so-great things throughout the department. But, we really need to move a little faster on this. I understand that we're in a, a little bit of a situation based upon the school and the economic climate, but at least having some sort of decision and, I guess, jumping the gun a little bit more towards the spring to bring it to the town and say, you know, what do we wanna do here? Come up with something. And I encourage, I don't know how many viewers we have here, but I encourage people, the Festival of Trees are coming up. Everybody who lives in town that's gonna come to that great event that Allison just talked about, stop by the fire station. Come and take a look. Walk in the door. We got guys 24 hours a day, providing them, you know, we're not on a call. The doors are always open for anybody to come in. We want people to come in and say, oh, you guys are doing this and you're doing that. We've done a great job making it work, but it's total lipstick on a pig at this point in time. We really need something new. And I'm hoping you guys can find a way to, to make it happen sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Taylor, 446 Dunstable Road, firefighter on the department. I wanna just tag on a little bit what Brad said, but I wanna talk about the cost aspect of it. The fire station on Kendall Road was built by funds by the Tingsboro Firefighters Association. The additions for the fire, both ambulance bays were the firefighter association, okay? The station on Chestnut Road was handled by a grant from the federal government. The town hasn't put a lot of money towards the fire department buildings in a very long time. This is something that really is overdue. And we really need to stand up and do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane LaRose, 6 Sleepy Hollow Lane. So, just listening to everything and seeing this, I, I have two suggestions. Can the board, as a group, take a tour of the fire station together and see, so they can point out everything, so you can actually go in there and take a look. And where the chief says he can get this done in six to nine days, why wait till February? Why not get it done 30 days? You know, put it on the next month's agenda. And I agree, it needs to be moved forward as quickly as possible and, and possibly at the town meeting in the spring. Move it forward. We can't just leave them. They protect us. We need to protect them.
Thank you. Couple of things. So, ha- having been to the fire station many times and, and gone through the tour, the only thing I would say relative to us touring as a group, open meeting laws aren't gonna, we'd have to work around some of that. I also think it's really important that people understand that this board is totally on board with this. We are gonna go, we can go as fast as the town can go. If, if I could, I would have the money allocated now. The problem is, it needs to go to town meeting. And so, we, there's certain steps that we need to do in order to get the town ready to accept this. That's, that's what we need to do. We need to be methodical and we need to understand, you know, the financial climate, other things that are going on. We need to be sensitive to that. And that's what we're trying to do, is be creative, go quickly, but we wanna make sure that we're not going so fast that the town is gonna reject it. Cause we don't wanna be one of those situations where we haven't done all the details. And we don't have to get everything perfect, but we need to make sure that we're doing it in such a way that we're at the point where the town says, yes, we're on board with that. We know we need it. Cause we're on board with it, I think it's, it's getting everybody else on board with it. Cause I know I only have one vote at town meeting. And I, I'm totally on board with going quickly on this, but making sure that what we're doing is what's gonna get us to town meeting approval to get the facilities that our fire department deserves. I mean, that's what we're talking about here. It's not, we're not, they're not asking for, and, and I know the chief is, he's fantastic in, in the, you know, the firefighters' union has gone through and they've built all of this stuff. They've done all those things. And we, you know, we as townspeople need to step up in that. I just think we need to come up with the right way to say, we're not asking for Taj Mahal. What we're asking for here is, this is what is required. These are, these are the needs. These are the musts. Not the, eh, you know, this is a nice-to-have and all that. This is what's needed right now and be fiscally responsible. So, the town can all sit there and everybody goes, it's a yay, right? It's one of those things, cause we all know what happens when it doesn't pass. Then we gotta go back and it, and it's, it gets real ugly. So, we wanna make sure we do it right. That's the key. So, you know, I, I think what we're talking about here is going quickly. And if we can go faster than, you know, that, we'll go faster.
And just to be clear, I'm not, I have no doubt that Chief Russell could say tomorrow where he wants the building to be. What I'm saying by February 10th is that if it's a site we have to acquire, that we've already engaged in negotiations, we know what the price will be. Certainly, we can't do that in six days. Additionally, if it's a site that we haven't considered as a part of the Tecton report, there are certain civil engineering analysis that need to be done to make sure there's turning radius, to make sure that there's room on the site, what the configure. I'm talking by February 10th, having a site that we know will work, that we've analyzed to make sure accommodates it. And if we have to purchase it, we know what the dollar value would be. So, that if the town is ready to consider an acquisition, if that's the route we need to go, it's ready for a May town meeting. Just to be clear on the expectation.
I'll bring it back to you.
Yeah. How did we get here? Yeah, I mean, I personally have used the services of the fire department more times than I would like to say, and certainly more than the police department. Actually, right before this meeting, there was an accident outside of my apartment and I was the one that called 911. And from the time that I got on the call to the time that the person was put in an ambulance was 11 minutes. So, I mean, absolutely tremendous, tremendous work that you all do. And I think it's absolutely a no-brainer. We need to keep you safe the way that you keep us safe. And I, I think I share the chair's thoughts that, you know, if I had this money in my pocket right now and we could just allocate it and do it, then let's do it. But, yeah, I think it's a little bit of slowdown to go fast. Hopefully, we can get the town to come on this journey with us. Cause it's, I mean, it's unquestionably needed. I think that that's, we're all on the same page there.
Mr. Schneider.
Echo everything everyone said. When I hear, you know, let's, let's go fast, I think to myself, let's be deliberate. Let's, let's do our diligence. Let's, let's make sure we do it properly while we're doing it as fast as we possibly can, right? We, we all acknowledge, we all acknowledge the need. Like I say, we're, we're gonna need to figure out a way to present it in such a way that, that it's palatable to the town. And that's, that's not a small task, right? I mean, anytime you're talking tax increases, you're gonna get some pushback. But, we, that, that is what we need to work on as a board. This is the first step. I think what we're, what we're demonstrating by doing this is that we're keeping this on the front burner, right? We're not waiting another three or four years before we start to consider, do we have the land? Do we have, you know, how are we gonna get the funding? We wanna do that now. It may take more than this year to do that, let's be realistic. But, we're doing that work now. And we're not, we're not taking our foot off the pedal. We're, we're not trying to push it, you know, kick the can down the road. We're just trying to be as, as complete and deliberate as possible so that we can get this thing done as quickly as possible.
Yeah. And I, and I also think it's important that while we're still looking at a standalone fire station and standalone police station, if, sorry, talking with my hands. If, you know, as we go through this process and I, and I, you know, we may be getting to that sooner than later, it may be that we just sit there and say, look, it doesn't make sense to, you know, to do a fire station and a police station and that we need to prioritize one of those. I, I'm totally on board with that. I just wanna make sure that whatever we say, it should be, let's come up with how we can address the needs of fire and sit there and say, we're gonna address the needs of police too. It, it's not an and/or, it's not an or, it's an and. We need to address both of those. Now, there might be different timelines and different levels of commitment and, and all the things that are there. But, that's why I think having the chiefs, the police and, and fire chief, working with Colin and a couple of the members from the board, to do that outside of the slowness of open meeting and, and government, make it happen. Figure out what the right way is. And then we sit there and say, okay, now, how are we gonna fund it? What are the issues that residents are gonna have? And, and how do we time it? It might be that we sit there and say, I wanna buy the land in May. I wanna come up with a plan for, you know, feasibility and, and come up with that and have a plan for, you know, whatever the next town meeting is where that makes sense. It could be that that's how we have to break things up. I think we have to, we have to paint that vision. And we have to sit there and tell residents, this is the vision. This is what we're, we're seeing. We're gonna do this, then we're gonna do this, and we're gonna make sure that we address those issues, rather than just saying, okay, I've, I've got a plan. I'm ready to go. It's like, we've thought about all these things.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
And, you know, the way that I came to be on the select board was through the Winslow School visioning effort. And I think that there's a lot of outstanding questions still about what's happening with that building. So, I think to your point about knowing that we need to move forward with a fire station, but also keeping in mind that there are these other things that are in play, whether it's the police station, the Winslow School, other buildings that we have in town that we may already own, thinking about those strategically and trying to, you know, sort of optimize the work that we're doing ahead. I mean, potentially, we can be using the same space for multiple things. And I think that would probably satisfy a lot of residents who are feeling like we're not making progress on things. But, really, it's, I think that being deliberate was a really great way to phrase that. Yeah.
Thank you. I didn't cut you off, did I?
No, I don't know. I do like the idea, though, that at the Festival of Trees, to encourage people, the townsfolk to go over and, and visit their fire station is a great idea. The more eyes we can get on that, the easier the sell will be, you know, come springtime.
Yeah, that would be a fantastic idea. I, I know that there are, there are great opportunities throughout the year, cause the, the fire department is out there meeting with the kids. And there, there are ample opportunities, but that's a great opportunity to see the building.
Sure.
And see what the situation is. And hopefully, we can find a way to, to do that. So, based on what we've heard, Colin is recommending, similar to what we had talked about, right, to sit there and say, let's, let's move on it. Let's assign a couple of people from the select board to work through those items. And, and maybe you could amend this to say, no later than February 10th. Is that, would that be okay with you?
I think it has the same meeting, so it's fine with me.
Okay. No later than February 10th. I know, select person Cohane had indicated a strong desire to participate in where he was on the Public Safety Building Committee last time, I think, that maintained some continuity.
I think you had also expressed.
I had also expressed an interest.
That's where I was going with it. Has anything changed? No, so, nothing has changed. So, I think we have our two people that, that we would like to have work on this diligently. So, based on that, could I have a motion relative to moving this forward?
You sure can. I move that the select board direct the town manager to work with the police and fire chief, as well as select board members Ron Cohane and Ron Schneider, to identify the best parcel for a standalone fire station and for a standalone police station and any related acquisition costs, and that the town manager be tasked with reporting back no later than February 10th, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And I noticed that she got the date right, the year right. That's a...
I got you.
Fantastic. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries 300. Colin, make it happen. Let's go.
Deal.
And then find the money. Find the money for it too. Go win the lottery, would ya? All right.
Thanks, folks.
All right. Now, going back to town manager's report. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm happy to share that at the recommendation of Police Chief Shawn Woods, I've appointed Adam Breton and Renato Aruho to the position of police officer for the town of Tingsboro. These appointments are both contingent on them successfully completing the police academy and a field training program once the academy is complete. Both candidates were first interviewed by a panel of Tingsboro police officers and supervisors. That panel recommended four finalists move on to the final interviews, which were conducted by Chief Woods, myself, and Director of People and Culture, Bridget Bell. We collectively agreed that these two were the best fit for the community and the department. These two hires will bring our sworn staff back to full strength. Just a reminder, and a fitting one, that we continue to experience a seriously elevated risk of brush fire. In just the last 24 hours, fire agencies across the Commonwealth have responded to 10 brush fires. In November, there have been more than 350 fires damaging more than 870 acres. Tingsboro Fire Department continues to provide mutual aid to help combat these brush fires, including most recently in Dunstable. Additionally, they are continuing to investigate reports of fire in town, most commonly due to the burning of leaves, construction material, and garbage, all of which is never permitted, but is extremely dangerous right now. It does look like we'll see some rain Thursday and Friday, which will hopefully reduce the risk. But, until then, people should continue to avoid any outdoor burning. We heard from Representative Colin Gary's office today that our home rule petition for additional liquor licenses was sent to the Committee on Third Reading. This is the last stop for the bill in the House before it will go before the full House for a vote. This confirms that we appear to still be on track to have the bill passed before January 1st. We opened bids last week for the construction of the new DPW building. Unfortunately, we only received one bid and it was substantially higher than our budget. Fortunately, we spoke after the bid with a vendor who had expressed an interest but didn't get quotes back from their subs in time. Their price was much more in line with our budget. So, we're gonna, we rejected that bid. We're gonna go back out to bid in the next couple of weeks. And hopefully, we see a better result. On that same front, I'm happy to share that the Massachusetts Legislature passed an act relative to strengthening Massachusetts Economic Leadership, otherwise known as the Economic Bond Bill. That included a $600,000 earmark for the new DPW building, thanks to Senator Kennedy. As you know, that building is tied partially to the $2 million Mass Works Grant, which made it eligible, eligible for the Economic Bond Bill. However, it is the legis, it is the state, so it's not as simple as it sounds. Even though it passed the legislature and the bill was signed into law by the governor, she ultimately chooses what parts of the bond bill she releases. And so, for the next several weeks, we'll work with Senator Kennedy and Rep. Gary to lobby her to hopefully release that money. But, in full transparency, we found our way onto bond bills four times in the last two years. And none of those times did the governor release the money. So, small win, that may not really be a win. Our fiscal year 2026 budgeting has begun. The Finance Department and my office, our conti- The Finance Department and my office are continuing to run different scenarios, really making sure that we're on track to meet our obligation to commit a million dollars in new growth from the Toll Brothers project to reduce the debt for the middle school. So far, so good. We're working closely with the Assessors Office and the Building Commissioner to track the progress on the Toll Brothers project to ensure that we hit the new growth needed by June 30th. We've talked about new growth quite a bit. What I will say is that although Toll Brothers may not be fully built out by June 30th, which is what's required for us to count the new growth, the values that we've been using in our projections were based on their original value when they proposed the project. And certainly, as every, um, property in town has seen, those values have increased quite a bit. So even if they're not at full, you know, full construction, we still feel comfortable that we'll reach enough to not have to amend other places in the budget and just strictly put that right toward the million-dollar, um, contribution. We sent out request information to department heads last week, and the deadline to submit their request is December 10th. The Lowell Regional Transit Authority has announced that thanks to state funding, they're running a fare-free pilot on all routes beginning on December 1st. This will run through September 30th and may be extended if the state renews the funding. Kat spent a lot of time last week doing a deep dive into our ARPA spending to confirm that we're on track to have all of the federal funds obligated by the end of December as required in the original ARPA appropriation. To date, the town has allocated 100% of its ARPA funding. At the conclusion of a few capital projects, we've identified just shy of $35,000 that was allocated for specific projects, but those projects were complete and under budget. That is not including the amounts that we've already reallocated to the bicentennial field irrigation project. At this time, the money is still considered allocated, so there's no need to reallocate it. And I recommend keeping that balance as it is to provide a little bit of a cushion. Fortunately, we claimed all of our ARPA money under the lost revenue, so we're not really subject to these regulations. Obviously, anytime there's, um, a change in who holds the power in the federal government, we wanna make sure that we're prepared for any scenario. So in case there's any switch to look back at those funds, we're certainly on track and have no risk of having to return money to the federal government. The Dragan Water Supply District Main Replacement Project in the Malvern neighborhood is moving along. They've asked for, and our DPW has granted, an extension to work beyond the November 15th shutdown required for a road opening permit. This will allow them to tie in the remaining houses on Malvern. We haven't had any frost in the ground yet, and the 10-day forecast looks clear, so there was no real risk to the town to letting that happen. Also, because we've disconnected some people, it would be kind of, uh, problematic for us to not let them finish the work till the spring. The bicentennial field irrigation project is on the homestretch. All the work with the, is complete with the exception of the installation of the new pump, which is slightly delayed. We expect that'll arrive in the first week of January. We weren't gonna be able to use it until the spring anyway, so it doesn't really change our plans. There's a little bit of electrical work that they'll have to do once the pump arrives inside the building, but it remains on budget, which is the most important piece. And we'll certainly be able to have that implemented for the spring season. Last week, we announced that we're seeking public input regarding a proposal to change the recycling pickup schedule so that all recycling on one side of the bridge will be picked up on the same week. Currently, the route is mixed with trucks crisscrossing the bridge in a highly inefficient manner. When Republic first proposed this to us, I actually thought we were already doing recycling on one side every week, cause that just makes sense. Turns out, we're not. So what we believe is this is gonna reduce the mist pickups. It's gonna increase their efficiency, so they'll be able to capture those mist pickups a lot quicker as opposed to waiting till Wednesday or Thursday. We've received a lot of positive feedback from it. I know there's a lot of talk, a handful of folks have suggested that we switch to every day, every week recycling. That is a substantial cost. We haven't fully run all the numbers, but you're looking at at least an additional $150,000 a year. The other piece is that there's a minimum we have to meet. Unfortunately, because of a lot of work that the Sustainability Committee has done and all the different offerings we have at the recycling center, at the DPW yard, our recycling has gone down slightly. So if we added every week recycling, we wouldn't meet that threshold. So we'd essentially be paying for, for recycling that we're not collecting. But totally an understandable question. We're asking that people provide their feedback by the 29th. If we move forward, Republic Services will mail a postcard to all residents with the new schedule. And of course, we'll use all, all of our different means of communication. And then I'm happy to share that the Valley Collaborative received a $3,300 grant for the Massachusetts Office of Outdoor Recreation for a winter hiking experience. These grants are awarded to organizations across the Commonwealth to help increase access to outdoor recreational activities for low-income residents, communities of color, and people living with disabilities.
Go ahead, Kat.
Last Wednesday, the town submitted the FY '24 Green Communities Annual Report to the D O E R. This report consists of data that is used to measure our energy reduction progress from our baseline. Our total energy consumption increase is steered by a mere 1% over last year, which compared to other communities is below average. For the, for the coming year, the town plans to focus on reducing energy use and emissions in high E U I, which is energy use intensity buildings, particularly at Town Hall and Tinsbury Elementary School. For those, for, for those watching, E U I is a measure of a building's energy efficiency. Planned energy efficiency measures, including HVAC, uh, and, excuse me, include investigating HVAC and lighting improvements as well as building envelope enhancements to reduce heating and cooling needs. I also plan to attend the Green Communities Summit this Friday with some of the Sustainability Committee members to learn more about the Climate Leaders Program and other green community initiatives.
Fantastic, thank you for the updates, as always. Select person Schneider, I'm gonna give you first chance this time. Just mix it up. Make sure everybody's paying attention.
Always, no, no, I always.
Keep us on our toes.
This is the highlight of the meeting every time, is listening to the town manager's report. And I remember not too long ago, when I made the recommendation that you post this, this report in the Neighbor to Neighbor. Seeing now that Neighbor to Neighbor is coming possibly to its end, do we have any idea if anyone is stepping up to buy that and continue that forward?
I saw Ann last week. She is hopeful that there will be someone. It is likely, given the late timing, that there may be a brief skip. But I know that she is very hard at work trying to make sure it continues, and I think that she's received at least a few qualified interested folks.
That would be terrific. I have no other questions, Mr. Chair.
Fantastic, thank you. Select person Gilfus.
No questions.
I didn't really have any questions, comment. Great stuff, as always, lots of things that are happening. I have heard some positive things with the sign, center of town. So some of these things where we can notify people, we have another vehicle of, uh, communicating that. And I know you wanna say something about that.
Yes, I do. We, we've seen a couple of questions online, I just wanna clarify.
Yes.
Electronic communication message boards, ECMs as they're defined in our zoning bylaw, were previously prohibited across town. As a part of the zoning review committee's work in, I think, 2023, they amended, and town meeting approved, an amendment to the zoning bylaw, which permits them for educational and municipal use only. So I've seen a few comments, people really like it, wanna know if they can put it on their pers, their private business. Unfortunately, the way the zoning bylaw reads, they are permitted, but again, only on property owned by an educational institution or municipal corporation. Just to clarify that.
Yes, that is correct, having been on that committee, and that was by design. Just because there was a concern of a proliferation of said signs. You know, one in the center of town, dealing with municipal items, very different than having them all up and down Middlesex Road. So, thank you for that update. I have no other further questions again. I think people will be looking forward to catching this on the podcast and, uh, online. All right. Let's see, let's do new business. 2025 local license approvals. And I'm telling you right now, I am thrilled to have this discussion because.
Matching my energy.
Because we won't have to actually sign these now. So, Jackie, I'll let you take it away.
Very exciting. It's that time of year again when we ask the select board to renew all local licenses issued by the board to various businesses throughout the town. These categories of license being renewed this evening include Class 1, 2, and 3 Auto Dealer License, Weekday and Sunday Entertainment License, Automatic Amusement Device Licenses, and the Common Victulars Licenses. These licenses are annual licenses that run January 1st through December 31st of each year. And the full list of renewals is attached to this memo. A high-level overview is that the board is being asked to renew all licenses that are currently in existence. As always, licensees are required to submit a completed renewal application, updating their information, the required insurance documents, and appropriate fees. A breakdown of the fees is collected is below. And all of these renewals are contingent on our Tax Office confirming tax compliance and receipt of any missing documents and fees.
Fantastic, I will.
I'm sorry, one more thing, just, um, the question came up about the, um, highlighted yellow. Those are just our new, um, businesses that have, um, asked for these licenses in 2024.
Fantastic, thank you. Select person Gilfus, any questions on the questions, comments?
Um, I don't, I'm really glad to do this exercise. I was thinking recently that I don't really have a good sense of how many businesses we have in town and how much is going on. And, um, being able to see it in this format was really, really helpful. And I think, um, also seeing the highlighting of the ones that were new this year and sort of thinking back to the conversations we've had this year, the things that I've been a part of. So, if nothing else, I'm really grateful for the energy and time that went into putting this together. So, yeah, thanks, Jackie.
Select person Schneider.
No, I have no questions. I think, um, I am so grateful that we don't have to manually sign every one of these.
Yep.
But it is, it is, um, it is, not gonna say surprising, it's, it's, um, it, it's good that there's this many businesses in this town.
Yeah.
You always think of this as a, sort of a bedroom time community. It's not. It's a very friendly business community, so I hope that continues.
Awesome. Thank you, yeah, I have no questions. Jackie, thank you for all of your due diligence in keeping track of the many licenses and hunting down and dealing with all the paperwork. Now, while we won't have to sign anything, Jackie still has to deal with it. So, thank you for all your efforts on that. So if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the select board approve the 2025 local license renewals as presented, contingent on the final tax verification and receipt of all required paperwork and fees.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, that carries 300. Select Board Reports.
Which way is he going?
Select person Schneider, you go first. She pointed that way.
I have nothing to report tonight, Mr. Chair.
Select person Gilfus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, the only thing that I wanted to say was, um, we're in the middle of Trans Awareness Week, and so I wanted to just acknowledge that and make people aware of it. Trans Awareness Week culminates on Wednesday with the, uh, Trans Day of Remembrance, which is a day to, uh, acknowledge those that we've lost to transphobic violence. And so, it sort of ends on a solemn note, but all this week is much more joyful and, and better. And so I just wanted to, you know, give a shout out to all of the trans and non-binary and gender non-conforming folks in town, everyone that I've, um, had the pleasure of connecting with, those who are in various stages of being out. You know, whether you're out or not, you are seen and a valued member of our society and our community. I think it is possible that I'm the first openly trans person that has been on the select board. I trust that I am not the first trans person that's been on the select board. But it is really a, um, an honor to do this work and to be able to be visible. And I have heard from members of our community about the, the importance of being out and, um, to do this work as a leader in our community. So, thanks for all of the support, and, um, now you're aware that it's Trans Awareness Week.
Thank you. So, it's Thanksgiving coming up. This is our last meeting before Thanksgiving. And frankly, uh, we had an opportunity today to have, uh, folks that I'm very thankful for. So, all of you folks for getting stuff done. But we had both police and fire here, uh, the folks who are working during Thanksgiving and keeping us safe. I just wanted to extend a, you know, a thanks, heartfelt thanks, um, to our public safety folks who are not always here because they're out there working. And it was fantastic to have, um, both of them here today. It was a lot of energy in the room, a lot of, um, things. Some of it was, um, you know, celebratory, and some of it is, you know, hard work types of things. But I did wanna extend, um, an early Thanksgiving to, to those folks, for our public safety folks who do keep us safe and, uh, definitely don't always have the opportunity to enjoy the, um, the time with their families during Thanksgiving. So, thank you to all those folks. And that was all I had. With that, we are going to go into executive session. Colin, do we need help for a motion on that?
I think I, I just read the whole thing, right? Okay, I move that we enter executive session, uh, in, under exemption two to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, chief of police, and under exemption three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public board and the chair so declares, Vesper Country Club versus Stonehenge Condominium Trust and Town of Tinsborough Sewer Commission. NEPBA Local 8B Arbitration Update. Order to Vacate 9 Kendall Road slash 250 Middlesex Road.
Second.
Thank you, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote?
In favor.
In favor.
I'm also in favor. I just wanted to do that, make sure. With that, we are gonna go into executive session. Our next meeting is December 2nd, I wanna say? Yeah, December 2nd, and then we have another one on the 16th. Thanks, everybody, have a great evening.